Open the door, somebody will make the motion.
We just have two minutes before we start.
Chairman, we're on the record again.
Okay, we're on, we are out of the executive session. This time I would entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we proceed with the direction that we discussed in our executive session.
Second.
Moved to second, and all fairer please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Okay, we're gonna take about a five, six minute break and then we'll come back and start the interviews. Everybody get comfortable and let the butterflies spin.
Sorry, I have to be focused.
I'm nervous for it, I gotta go.
Me first. I was gonna talk to the clerk. And she's stopped. I meant to.
Oh, I always do. Perfect, oh, absolutely.
Um, so do you wanna take one or I'll take? Do you want to take both?
Yeah.
And the conference room is open.
Got it.
So I can do both?
Got it.
Thanks Doug, that ice cream, man, that just made my whole day.
I thought it would.
I'll make sure you guys are still going. Okay, welcome back everybody, our next and last agenda item of the day is an action item. This is interviews for Valley County Treasurer. We have three candidates. This is an open session, so I would ask when we are talking to each candidate that the other folks please remain quiet while we go through the interview process. The best way to start, I believe, is for us to pick who wants to go first. Yes?
Um, Doug and I arranged that we, the candidate that is not being interviewed will take if they don't make up more here from the process.
Even though this is an open meeting?
At the end, they can all stay, but it's during the interview process.
Okay, do you wanna pick numbers for who goes first, second, and third, or how do you wanna do that?
You can help that order.
It was between one and ten.
Commissioners, just to make it fair, I think we should just put numbers in, uh, assign numbers to each applicant and then the commissioner pull it from this bowl right here. We'll get pretty scientific.
Okay, you get it all set up, Mr. Clerk.
Everybody take a deep breath.
More nervous than they are.
Yes, I am. No, I was gonna say while we're waiting is that I just, I really appreciate all three of you guys stepping up and applying for this in your hat and a ring, I know, and going through this process is gonna be probably painful for all of you. But, you know, again, just, we appreciate you guys doing it, so, good luck with everything.
This is a really hard thing for commissioners to do. Because we did it for when Archie resigned and we picked a really good clerk. But it's a, it's a hard thing because we love all you guys and we don't wanna lose ya but or make you too mad, just a little mad but not too mad. But it's one of the more tougher things to do.
All right, so the first interviewee will be?
Adel, she's the chairman.
No, you let her choose.
See, we don't even wanna do that.
Jody Green will be the first interviewee. The second interviewee will be? Johanna? And then the last interviewee will be Gabrielle.
So then I would, okay, there we go. So Jody, come on up to the table, please, have a seat, the hot seat. Thank you for applying for the job. I know you've been on it now for what? How much, eight months?
Nine.
Nine months. Um, are you liking it?
I love it. Learning, still, still a learning curve, so.
Well, the way I like to work these is, I'll ask you a question and then it's Sheri's turn and then Dave's turn and we just kinda revolve through and kinda go there from there and see what kinda reactions we get.
Okay.
So, Sheri, you're next, I guess.
You gonna ask questions first?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, is it?
Well, I'm not done, we're gonna keep going and going and going.
Oh, got it, okay. Tell me about any training that you've had, what have you done in training for preparation for this job?
Specifically for the treasurer's job? I have had numerous hours with our financial officer. I've spoken with our former, sat down for some hours with our previous, previous treasurers. I've attended two conferences, I attended the national conference of the treasures and then I attended the one in Idaho, the IACT. I have spent time with our banker. And I've just reached out with other treasurers in the counties as questions have come up. I've had a couple months to have questions and stuff.
Just get to pick random questions here, so. Jody, how about, uh, this is a good one. How many hours a week would you commit to being in the offices?
The same I do now, forty. Um, I guess one of the, one of the benefits right now, it's a little hard because I can't go over the forty hours, will be the relief of not clocking in, so if I am here a little later or, you know, during the tax drive when we're collecting in December, coming in on Saturdays is nothing new that we've done. So, in that regard, it'll be kinda nice not having to watch comp time, so.
Anything you wanna change? Including personnel, including staff, and?
No, we've got a good group, we've kind of got a flow going and I did some major changes already when I moved the desks around. Bank accounts are good and I think we've got a good thing going right now, so I wouldn't change anything.
So Jody, before Gabe sat down, had you considered running for this? This is a political appointment. So, were you, were you going to run for this position in the future, was that your future goal?
He and I actually discussed that when we went to the state conference and that was something I was going to do.
And it's, well, I'm sorry, it's not my turn, sorry, Dave.
Uh, I was just gonna ask you, like, what would you say your management style would be? You know, we all have different kinds of ways of leading people and what would you describe, self-describe your management style as?
I would think... I'm, I won't ask anyone to do anything I'm not willing to do myself. If I'm gonna ask someone to do something, I've researched how to do it and am right there to help that process.
And this is really not your question, but I need to know, you, the treasurer runs next year for election, right? So then you have the rest of this year to fill out this term if you get appointed. You do plan on running if, even if you don't get appointed?
So, I'm gonna follow up on the management style. So, what you described to me is kind of an interactive manager. How do you, so if you go out and do all the discovery for your employees, how do you help your employees to grow?
Everyone is so different and even just in our office, the two other people learn two completely different ways. And I sat down with Pat one day and did a leadership. It was a pretty detailed, and I had found that that's how one of the people I've been kinda struggling with our, with training, I realized that she is just a completely different learner than I am and I had to completely adjust how I teach her so that she's understanding because how I teach is really how I learn. And so I had to, I had to change that and I, I like to be somewhat hands-off and be there to help them if they need it because I don't wanna put it on their shoulder. Because I don't feel people learn well when someone's telling you how to do it behind your back. You know, I, as they're learning, I kinda laugh and say, "Just try it because I can fix it." Try it, if you have questions, ask me, but I do like them to think about it for a minute before they ask me, you know, so.
I'm gonna give you kind of a double-part question. When did you and what really interested you in applying for this job? I mean, I know that you've been doing it now for a month, you were doing it for a few months before that. Can you just kinda describe to us like what, what, really what interested you or what made you think that you might wanna run for an office, because I'll tell you, well, that's a lot different than I would've guessed it would've been. It's an interesting process.
It's, it's definitely not something when I started at the treasurer's office that I set out and was like, "One day I'm gonna be the treasurer." I started and it was in a completely different field than I've ever done, but I loved it. I enjoy learning, so for me to start in a completely different job field was, was exciting because I'm constantly learning different things in a different aspect of where I, I just have never been before. And as I've moved, as I've moved through the positions just within the office, I've kind of enjoyed learning more and more about the tax process, the back screen of what the treasurer does, all that stuff, and so the push to really do it was, I know I can do this and I just, I, I just feel like I'm, I can, I can do this. And there's so much more even involved than even what I, what I know. So it's exciting to think of how many more workshops and, you know, there is out there. I really would like to dip a little more into the legislative side of taxes, but it's a little intimidating.
That's what happens, pretty soon you need, you wanna move up the chain, get into the next level. Um, and your family's okay with you being a treasurer, being an elected official?
My husband and I sat down for probably two weeks and had the conversation for an hour a night of pros and cons and how hard and being in the front light and how many people are just not gonna like ya because they're just not gonna like you and it was something he's, he's always supported and I would really go.
What kind of community service are you doing, Jody? I mean, elected positions for the county really should be something that you are always representing the county within the community also. Be involved in anything right now?
Right now, community-wise, I, I'll help out at the fair. I, I, I really struggle to commit to anything specific because I like to have my options open when people need help. For instance, when we do the Halloween, my husband and I, we like, we go help them with the, with the barn. And I just spoke with Rob at the Community Guardian. I told him I was, that was something I was interested in doing. Something I feel I would really enjoy, so.
How would you, Jody, how would you say, would you integrate our guiding principles and kind of our All-Star campaign into your newfound position, should you end up there?
I feel like I strive to do it now in the position I'm in. I like to keep a, a general. I've kind of always, my husband, worked for the county. And they're not gonna necessarily specify Jody from the treasurer's, it's always gonna be a county employee. So I try to make sure interactions are positive, I... I just, we try to do that in our office now, we try to stay transparent, that's, you know, service.
Okay, I don't have any more questions.
Jody, tell me, so if you're not chosen and you have somebody new in your office, tell me how you would respond to that. How would you, how would you integrate this new person into the team?
It's gonna be tough because we're getting ready for our tax drive, but I'm gonna do the same for them that I've done for every other treasurer that was there. I'll be there and I'll support and I'm gonna do my job and I will help them as much as I can.
How many, how many treasurers have you worked for since you've been here?
Gabe and Glenna, Glenna hired you. The only thing... So Patter'd asked us one question we should probably cover. So just being a leader, so management, because this is an elected position, I mean, this position can turn over multiple times when you're working with somebody. So your management style is really critical. So what if somebody came to you and you were in a situation where somebody asked you to do something just on the border, you know, little illegal, not, you know, not in the public eye? How would you ethically handle that?
It's funny, I've, I've seen that question before and I've, I've laughed about it and thought, man, I mean, if someone brought a gun into work, I'd probably take it out of their desk, which would be illegal, but, you know, in, in complete seriousness, it's, I wouldn't even have to think about it. Even like I was saying before, bottom line is now I'm a county employee. And that's what people see as a county employee, so if I'm doing shady things, if I'm doing low par, it looks, it's on the county, it's always gonna look, they, when people are upset, they're not upset at specific, they're upset at the county. So I wouldn't even really have to think about it, if somebody wanted something a little shady, I would, no, just...
Uh, okay, we've got one more of the checklist questions, I'll just throw that one out there. How do you see yourself like integrating into the leadership team? How would you see yourself, you know, either integrating into or what would you try to incorporate into like the county leadership as far as being an elected official and? It's, it's an interesting, I mean, you know how the structure works, is that, you know, it's an interesting position where you're a part but part of a bigger team, too. So, you know, I mean, that's one of the things that we all struggle, I certainly I have since I've been here, is trying to figure out exactly what is your role? Now that you're gonna be an elected official, should that come to pass, you know, so what, what would you bring to the table as far as, you know, being a part of that group?
I would bring me, I feel like I have a good relationship with all the, I mean, when it comes right down to it, I didn't really realize this till probably over two years into that office, but we work with every department in the county, some a lot more than others, but every department at some point, I have contacted, I've had to talk to, and I feel like I've got great relationships with them. And I understand that that changes somewhat, I'm hearing, if you become an elected official, those, you know, those, those great relationships I have are gonna, those can change, but just staying as open as I, really to bring it is just keeping open communication because I can't run an office if, if you're not supported by the other offices and I feel like vice versa. We're all kind of in this together, making this whole thing work, so.
I've got one more question, so tell me about any management training you've had. How have you managed people in the past and what, how have you prepared yourself for the next step of your career as far as management training?
I was a manager for just over ten years in my previous job and those were things that we attended quarterly. Just to put in different situations, you know, different help. The counties put on a few and like I said, I, before this had even come up, I was struggling with someone in the office and I approached Pat and just said, "I need to be the best me I can be." And, and I'm the, I'm sitting as a chief, I need, I need to make sure I am as effective as I possibly can be for the people in my office or I'm not really doing them any favors. And so I, I've had, like I said, it was a couple hours, it was a pretty, you know, in-depth, but I signed up for, I mean, I just feel like there's always something you can learn, there's always room. People come, especially when you have groups, people come with different ideas that you wouldn't have thought of and I really appreciated hearing things like that, different approaches and so.
I don't think I have any other questions.
I'm done also.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
You wanna send in Johanna next, that'd be great. Was I supposed to take this? I might have taken your form, sorry.
Right ahead.
I have an extra one if you need it to.
I'll print some more.
I'm just using the bag for notes.
You want another one?
No, no, I think I, no, I got enough paper here. Come on in, Johanna, have a seat.
Have a seat.
It's kinda hot. Thank you for applying for this job.
Absolutely.
I know the way we kinda work this is we each take a turn answering, asking questions until we're all answered out and so I guess I'll kinda go first. Why did you decide to apply for this job?
Great question. I think all of you know me, so I don't need to like dive into my personal past. But I have a background in accounting, I have a degree in accounting. And numbers and accounting are a passion of mine, I've worked in that field for fifteen years. But I also come from a political background. In the previous interview, I threw some stats out there. My great-great-grandfather represented Valley County in the Idaho Legislature between 1903 and 1905, was a prosecuting attorney for sixteen years. And then each generation since then has an impressive resume of community service. Grew up in politics my whole life and so there's a part of me that has politics running through my blood. And my life right now is a balance of my interests and my passions. And when I saw this job come up, I thought, oh my goodness, this is, it's the perfect mix of my passions and my interests. I get to work as a public servant but do accounting work at the same time, so. I had a few things happen throughout the summer in my life and the listing of this job seemed to be perfect timing. And I know that if I didn't apply for it, I would regret it, so.
So you've been talking about your work experience and kinda how it applies to this position. Tell me about your management experience and how it would apply to this position.
Yeah, absolutely. So, in my previous job, which I've been there for seven years and, or my current job, excuse me, and my previous job, I'm a manager, I supervise employees. And I believe that the foundation to a successful workplace is good teamwork. And building a team requires trust and communication. Typically, leadership styles, you see like a pyramid of a top-down leadership structure. Well, I don't believe in that, I believe in like an inverted pyramid where a leader's job is to lift up their employees and allow them to perform and excel at their best. And I think that working with, working as a team and working with a team is really important. And building up your employees so that they operate at their highest efficiency through teamwork, trust, communication, and having them be fulfilled in their work is, is how my leadership style is. Also, can I add to that? For the past six years, I've coached track at the high school level. And so while that's not a management position of any sort, you get a lot of experience building a team of individuals who is excelled or who is driven to excel on their own. And I think that that's really relevant to this situation because a coach's coaching style isn't always the best style to inspire each athlete to perform. Some athletes like to be yelled at, "Hey, you're slow, go faster," or, "Hey, you did really great in this race," or, "What is it that is driving you to compete today?" And you have to look at each person as an individual and recognize that they're not all the same and that the inspiration has to come uniquely different to each individual, so.
Hey, I get the next question.
All right.
So I guess the question I have is, you know, the, the challenge of coming into a new organization is always, especially when you're in a management role, is, you know, how do you integrate into that team that's already here? So, you know, there's lots of different ways, we've probably all heard horror stories and seen horror stories, but just give us a little bit of a description on like how would you integrate yourself into this new situation as the leader?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think that that aspect of the job is a thing that makes me, I wouldn't say nervous, I would say challenged. You know, after, I spoke with Gabe and I spoke with Glennon and I spoke with, you know, other treasurers around the state and I think that the duties of the treasurer are all within my wheelhouse, but stepping into a team... But stepping into a team as the lead role, that's terrifying. And like I said, in building a good team, you have to have trust, you have to have communication. I think when new people come in, they often come in like, like a bulldozer and they say, well, these are the way that I do things, we're going to change things up and we're going to establish all these new principles. That's not the way that I would operate. I think that coming in and learning the individual processes, really taking the time to get to know the team and having them teach me what they do and why is an important step to learning the job and building the trust so that you can be an effectively, an effective team.
My turn.
All right.
As you'll find out, if you get the job, a lot of times for the treasurer, there's a couple of months of each year that you do a tax drive. Which requires you to put a lot of checks into a computer and get, make sure it's all balanced. And sometimes that requires working on Saturdays. Are you willing to do that?
Absolutely. In my current job, sometimes I have to work late nights, Saturdays, Sunday afternoons. I think that it's important to recognize that you don't want to let work's work stack up. If you can come to work on Monday morning and realize that your workload is normal, that's a good feeling to have.
Okay, thank you.
What, what would be your future goals with the county?
Good question. Right now, I'm the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission and I have a deep love for this county. I think that I have always envisioned in my tenure plan to be with the county in some way, shape or form, whether that's a volunteer position where I currently am or potentially an elected position. This obviously is an elected position. And I think that this job, the treasurer job, is a wonderful introduction for me to learn the way that the county operates, to listen to these commissioner meetings that you have, to hear how the other departments function so that if someday I would choose to move on from the treasurer's position, it could be to another role within the county where my expertise could be applied again.
You would rerun in the spring?
Absolutely. Yeah, in terms of like long-term plans, I think that this job is at least a 10-year commitment.
This is uniquely for you because I I don't know your background that well as far as, you know, all of the things that you've done in your job, but part of, part of, part of what the treasurer does is handle county's investments. Can you just give us a little bit of an overview as far as like what have you done, what do you know about investments and how would you tackle what we have right now?
Absolutely. So, 15 years accounting experience, I started in bookkeeping, I've worked with accounts payable, accounts receivable, audit, reconciliations, monthly budget to actual comparisons and discussions with managers. And then also treasury strategy and investment. So three weeks ago, yeah, it's been about three weeks now, at my current job, we facilitated a $57 million financing deal. And I helped with the receipt of those funds and then further investment into accounts so that we could have that money work for us. So we can spend it over the next couple of years. So, working with investing the money in places where it can be useful. You don't want to put something in investment that you can't pull out of without penalty. You need to make your money work for you in the best way possible. Unfortunately, interest rates aren't on our side right at the current moment, but there's always vehicles of investment that are safe. First of all, that's the number one priority to pay a lot of money, but then also give you a return. I would, I'd love to answer that question in more specific detail, but I'd need to familiarize myself more with the procedures.
How do you feel about new people, new employees underneath you, are you the type of person that learns from them or do they learn from you? Do you micromanage, do you stand over their shoulder, or do you let them make their mistakes?
So, I have a philosophy in life that you can learn something new from anyone. I've learned a lot of new things from my children. They taught me a lot about life and a lot about myself. I think that people are put into your life to help, help teach you how to be a better person. I do not believe in micromanaging mostly because I don't like it when I'm micromanaged. You need to equip people with the skills and the ability to perform their job and to allow them to do it in the way that's best for them. And as a manager, you're wasting your time if you're spending time telling them how to step by step do every little piece. Now that that doesn't correlate to training. Training, you go through step by step and you show people how to do things. And then once the employee is equipped, you back off and you let them operate. That's my philosophy.
You talked a little bit about community service, but as an elected official for the county, you really should be representing the county in the community. So tell me about your community service.
So my community service started at a very young age. I volunteered in church as a kid, I worked for, I volunteered for different nonprofit organizations. My very first job outside of college was, it was a nonprofit called MIST, Mentoring Youth Supporting Teens, that I helped start, I was on the board, I did the accounting for them. Helped develop their accounting systems. And that was a volunteer job for two years, I believe. All of my work with the athletic departments at the high school is volunteer. I'm currently a volunteer for the Planning and Zoning Commission. And then I was recently elected as president of Central Idaho Trail Riders Alliance, which is a nonprofit organization based out of McCall that works on keeping single-track motorized trails open. I could actually, let me add a few more things in there. So when I was in high school, I was a page for the Idaho Legislature. And since I was a direct relative of sitting member of the legislature, I didn't get paid. So that's considered volunteer work.
Hopefully your dad paid you something.
I was taught that having a room and a hot meal every night was.
Oh, you have a good dad.
Can you, can you make other kids in today realize that or help?
I tell my kids that more often than they probably should hear. And then I also participated in something called Girls State, which is like a week-long government summer camp. Because I was also a nerd in high school.
Best place to be in high school.
Yep, absolutely. We wouldn't trade it for anything.
And of all those volunteer positions, your newest elected position might be the toughest one to fill as far as the shoes that you have been handed. Very large shoes. Very large riding boots, actually.
Size 15.
So I, you know, I guess one of the things I too would ask is, coming into a leadership position in the county, what do you think you can bring into specifically the leadership position that's going to be part of the elected officials of Valley County? You know, not necessarily, not necessarily is the new treasurer for your department, but also like within that leadership team for the whole group, like what can you, what can you bring to us?
Absolutely, well, hard work. My work ethic was established really when I was very young. I don't believe in completing projects halfway. You got to get them done completely and you do them well and you do them to the best of your ability. I also think that I've been blessed and or cursed, I'm not really sure, with natural leadership abilities. More than once I've questioned to my close circle of friends, why, why did they put me in that spot? And they say, well, it's because you're a natural-born leader. And so I think that representing Valley County, whether it's in the office here or out in a public space, I think that that's something that I naturally am good at. I also think that my accounting skills would help, you know, I've worked in private industry for a long time and they always say that governments tend to be a little bit behind on talking about like integration systems and and receiving money or things like that. And I think that down the road, once I become familiar with the systems, hopefully some of my past expertise could help us operate a little bit better as a county.
I'm smiling because I drive these guys crazy.
And it's a short trip for most of us. So if you are not appointed today, do you plan on running for the position next spring?
That is a good question and I've actually flip-flopped on the answer multiple times. I feel so passionately about this job and it seems to fit me like a glove. And so I think that I would be silly not to run for it in the spring if I weren't appointed. Of course, life circumstances can change and so I I wouldn't commit to that at this point in time, but I have considered it, yes.
Thank you.
What do you know about our star guiding principles? Have you done any research on the guiding principles?
I have not.
We have what's called service, transparency, accountable, responsive. And everything that we do is centered around those guiding principles. It's just a yet.
I haven't heard of them yet. They all sound like things that I agree with though, so.
I, you know, I don't have a lot of other questions, I'll, I guess I just, is there anything else you'd like to tell us? Anything else you'd like to add?
Yeah, that's it, I do have a few other things. I mean, I think the big elephant in the room is that there's somebody applying for this position who currently works within the department. And to me, that's the biggest challenge in overcoming potentially hurt feelings or somebody who, you know, that that relationship might be difficult. But it would be my absolute passion to make that relationship work and teach and grow the employees within the department so that each of them could be potentially qualified one day to lead the department if they so chose. I also think that if you hire from within, you're leaving a void that then has to be filled. But if you retain the employees who are currently here and you add me to the equation, it's a value add. There's no lose-loss in that situation.
I have one more question, but it doesn't really be taken to this job. What district do you live in?
For county commissioner?
County commissioner?
I live in Debs.
I was going to say there's another position coming up in November too.
Just move to District 1A next month.
Nobody wants our job, we get paid a lot less than these other positions.
I will tell you, a county commissioner seems very interesting to me and I, like I said, I'm very passionate about public service, especially in Valley County. And it's something that eventually, not this next election, I would like to pursue. But, and I've mentioned this before, the commitment, I realize it's a part-time job. But my work ethic, and my husband reminds me of this all the time, he says, Joanna, you would work 110%, you would work 150% in that position. I'd attend all of the Pay at Forest Coalition meetings and the Land Allocation Committee meetings and I'd make the trips to Boise for the conferences and I would go to the Republican Central Committee meetings and I'd end up being away from home and being an absent mother during this time when my kids are young. And so I've got eight years of them left being in the house. And I think that my timeline for considering a position like that has got to be around the eight-year mark.
I only got three left, so you better hurry up.
If they could graduate early, maybe we could make that happen, but I don't think so.
One of the problems that that we had is people think they can do this job from not being at the office. So how many hours a week would you commit to being in the courthouse?
So I don't know the answer to that question yet, but I will say during COVID, we all got the chance to go home and work from home. And I chose to work from the office instead. There was days that I did work from home because my kids needed childcare, but I much prefer to work in an actual office. I think I'm much more focused and much more productive. You know, I talked with, I talked with Gabe and I talked with Glenna and I think that my time here in the office would look like five days a week, absolutely. I I can commit to being a present treasurer. Somebody who, like I said, leadership is upside down. You can't expect your employees to be here eight to five and then you to show up, you know, 10 to two with an hour lunch. That's not, that doesn't inspire greatness in other people.
I don't have any more questions.
One that I asked before is, you know, you are out in the community, you are supporting and representing the county, so if someone asked you to do something that was just slightly illegal, slightly, you know, unethical, what would, you know, how would you handle that situation?
Absolutely not. I think that, you know, a good example for how I've handled stuff like that in the past, not that this is unethical or illegal, but people recognize that I'm on planning and zoning and they want to talk like, oh, hey, like, I know you're not supposed to talk to us, but could we just have like a little conversation about a potential, like, what if I did a subdivision? And we went to a training with the lawyer from the city of McCall. And I have copied his response in every single conversation. And I say, you know what, I really want to hear what you have to say, but I also think it's valuable for the public to hear it and the other commissioners because if I hear it now, then you can't talk about it at the meeting and I have to recuse myself and then we can't discuss it. So ethics, especially as an accountant, very important to me.
Perfect. I have no more questions.
It's a loaded question, I think you just drove, don't you?
Yeah.
Are we all good?
I think we're all good, thank you for coming, yeah, we really appreciate it, good to chat with you.
Thank you. Should I wait?
Yeah, and then we'll bring all three of you back and make our decision. This is not going to be easy.
She'd be great down in the county in any position.
Come on up Gabby.
Last but not least.
Is this, is this the best for last?
We'll see.
So the way this kind of works is we're each going to take turns answering you questions until we run out of questions.
Okay, sounds good.
And I'll go first. Knowing you over the years and how intelligent you are and your abilities and budget and HR and all that kind of stuff, my question to you is, are you concerned about getting bored as being a treasurer?
No, I'm not, I've thought about that a lot. I feel like the treasurer has the ability to participate in so much more that maybe a bigger department like the clerk's office, they have so much more on their plate that it's a little bit harder for them to participate in committees and to really help lead the county and I feel like that is one of my strengths. And one of the things that I'm really looking forward to if I do get the treasurer position is the ability to participate in those types of committees and really jump in and continue to find new things that will challenge me along the way.
Thank you.
Can we talk about any kind of training that you've done in preparation of this, both management and or treasury training?
Yes, so I have been a leader for, in leadership roles for over 10 years. I took the NACO 14-week online High Performance Leadership Academy just back in April. And that was very intense and took a lot of time and was a big commitment and a huge learning opportunity for me. I participate in the Elite Leaders, the Strategic Committee started and I try to go to as many of those as possible, I read.
I read any book that anyone recommends about leadership, I read it. I think that it's important to continue education, although I've been leading for over 10 years now. If I don't continue to educate myself and learn and keep reading books and doing as much as I can to challenge myself, then I'm gonna get stagnant or even worse, go backwards. So I think it's really important to continue that education. So I have done that with the leadership. And as far as the Treasurer's Office, I ran for treasurer three years ago, so I did a lot of research about what they do.
I know that.
Sorry?
I did not know that.
Yeah, I ran, and I did not win, but I learned so much about the process. You know, and in the Clerk's Office, we do the kinda the opposite side of things that the Treasurer's Office does. So I understand, and I've learned a lot about how their taxing districts work, how the different years work, how their reports run and things like that. So I've done a lot of research that way, too.
So I was super impressed when I read through your resume. I was like, wow, that's great. It's nice to read that background and see all the different things that you've done. And it was great to see the professional side of it. And so I guess one of the things that I don't really know about you is like, what other sorts of community involvement are you engaged in? You know, what other activities do you, you know, participate as far as, you know, civic?
Outside of the county?
Outside of the county.
Yeah, so I'm on the Republican Central Committee. Been on that for three years. So I've learned a lot about politics and people running for elections and things like that. So that's been really fun. I recently joined the Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation and helped in there and quit this year. And my children are just now starting school, so I'm very excited about the possibility of doing PTA and all of that stuff. My daughter just started preschool, so I haven't really got to get involved yet. But that's one thing that I have a passion about is the education. I've considered running for school board once I get a little bit more educated on the issues and things that are going on. At this point, without a kid in the school, I didn't feel that it was appropriate. But as my kids grow up, I really wanna be involved in the school system. And I know that the Social Committee is part of it, but we do so much, we're trying to reach out so much and do it outside of the county that I feel like it's appropriate to mention at this point. Two years ago, me and a couple of the court clerks were talking about wanting to participate in more committee, county outreaches, things, you know, doing food drives and school supplies drives and things like that, wanting to get involved. And we weren't sure what some of the resources were, so we said, why don't we create our own to do all those things? And so we started working on creating the Social Committee. Congratulations, blessing and all the support you guys have given us. We've been able to do a lot in the last two years, so it's been very exciting.
So if you're not appointed to this job, do you plan on running next spring?
It's a good question. I never intended to run against Gabe if he was gonna stay and run. And if the treasurer, if whoever you do select is doing a great job, then I don't see a need to run against them. This was an opportunity that I couldn't not put my name forward and offer my services. If someone else is deemed more appropriate for the job, then I'm gonna let them have a chance to, because it's gonna be from now until you have to declare, and the end of February is not a lot of time. So I would respect that decision and allow that person a little bit more time in the job to see how they do. And if it doesn't work out and I have another opportunity in the future, then I will definitely keep that door open. But I love working for the county. I love my current job. I love working for the Clerk's Office. So I'm, if I don't get the job, I'm perfectly happy in my current role. I just think that this is a really good fit for me and that I could really serve the county good by even in this position.
Tell me about your management style, Gabby. How many people have you managed in the past? And what would you say is a good management style for you?
So right now, there's nine people in two different departments, the court clerks and the Clerk's, the Clerk's Office. Over time, I have managed quite a few more than, never more than that at one time, but that's quite a few come and go. I would say my leadership style is stewardship. I, my number one goal is to be a servant leader, to be the first one to answer the phone if someone's busy or to offer a helping hand if I can tell they're overloaded, to always know the jobs and to be able to help and jump in and lead from the front instead of sitting in my office and dictating from afar, but to actually be a part of it and to be helping them to succeed. I love, we read the new policy where you're supposed to sit down monthly with your employees and talk about goals and stuff. I think that's been a really good opportunity for us to see what our staff wants to do, you know? See if they wanna promote, see if they wanna, you know, if they are happy in their job. And it's been a really good opportunity to show that I care about them as people and what they want. Because that's really important to me, not to just focus on the bottom line, but to focus on the employees themselves. Because I feel like if you show that you care about them and about what they want in life and helping them succeed, they're gonna be better employees and they're gonna work harder for you and do a better job, so I'd say stewardship.
Your turn, isn't it?
Oh, it's my turn. So, you know, one of the things that, I guess, you know, I'd like to know more about, too, is like, how do you see yourself incorporating into the, into the office across the hall over there? As, you know, especially given the fact that you might be meeting somebody who is also applying for the job? You know, can you just talk about how you would integrate yourself into that space?
I've done that before. When I was appointed Chief Deputy, I wasn't the only person that the clerk considered. And I supervised that person right after getting the job that they were interested in. I, being, I'm so lucky to have worked in the Clerk's Office. I touch, I work with every department, including the Treasurer's Office. Payroll, paying the claims, all those types of stuff that we do, we interact all the time. So I have a really good relationship with the Treasurer's Office. Jessica has been working in our office about one to two days a week to help out while our report is on returning to leave. So I've been able to build a relationship with her. I respect Jody very much, and I don't see a problem. I think we can work together well if I get the job and to continue to help develop her skills in Chief Deputy role.
So my last question is, how many hours you spent, you plan on spending in the courthouse as the treasurer every week?
It would be a standard 40 hours a week. If there were things like tax drives that required more than 40, then I'd be here more than 40 hours a week. If the workload was light, I would find other things to do, obviously vacations or sickness or, you know, have that flexibility as an elected official. But it would be my aim to be here 40 hours a week, every week, when my staff is here.
I know that you were, I'm very appreciative of you and the way that you've integrated into different teams. You were part of our STAR guiding principles team, our strategic plan and our, our, the CIP program. And so, you know, I just really appreciate how you have reached out and integrated yourself into different projects already. The Social Committee, you know, I really feel like Gabby's one that, you know, you're bringing the county together as one Valley County team. And that really touches me a lot. So I really, I know that, I was, I've asked everybody, what do you know about our guiding principles? But I know you know them already. And I just wanted to say I'm very appreciative of all your support and your teamwork.
Is there a question? That's a question. That's supposed to be a question.
I know, but I already know she knows. What do you know about our guiding principles for the other two?
They are.
You wrote them?
I didn't. Cindy actually came up with the STAR.
Yeah, she did.
Service, transparency, accountability, responsiveness. And the whole point of it is to have the employees showing those four traits to everyone who walks into the door so that we are branded together. And when the community thinks about us, they think about those four principles. And so we made it into the STAR so that it's catchy and people will remember it. And we've been doing some work so far with the barbecue last week, which, by the way, I have heard nothing but great things from. Everyone said how appreciative they were that the commissioners took the time to make them lunch and talk to them and whatnot. So they were very appreciative of that. But I thought it was a great kickoff. We've got more coming, and I think it's a really good program. I think Cindy came up with a really good tagline.
I'm just glad you guys didn't call it the rats program.
No, it wasn't about the commissioners. That would've been ours. About the employee.
I've got a couple more questions. I don't know if you have more or not, but.
Go ahead.
Well, I was gonna say, so I guess one of the things I'd like to know is, I mean, you have been very integral here and you know how the system works. I think you know where our deficiencies are probably pretty well. And I'd like to know, what do you see as like the future goals? What are your future goals within the county? And what do you see like the future goals for the county? Now, that's a big question.
I have been very excited to be able to be a part of some of the stuff that we've done in the last couple of years. I felt like the leadership development and the leadership programs that we've done was huge. And I feel like we've leaps and bounds above where we were a few years ago. Just personally, the opportunities that I was given to educate myself, to be a part of it and to prove myself before an opportunity for a new job comes up, I've already had an opportunity to show that I'm committed and that I, you know, will take part and participate in different things like that. So I'd like to see the leadership continue to grow. I just launched the new mentorship program, which I'm really excited about. And I think that'll be really helpful. Obviously, you know, of all the issues that you guys have been working on, you know, with housing and things like that, it's the right path. And I'd like to help with all of those things. The capital improvement maybe is something I know Gabe was on and I'm happy to participate if I get the job as treasurer. And I think we can really help plan for some great things in the future. Planning of the different expenses that we might have and stuff. I think that the hiring of Scott Klingon was huge and all the different things that we have now been able to do in there has been really exciting. New building, new, you know, or new locations and stuff. You guys are all working on that stuff. It's been really exciting.
I don't have any more questions.
So if you don't get appointed to this position, I know that you are grooming yourself for a future in the county. And I just wanna make sure that, that, you know, there's, that you would know that you have huge potential within the county. And I know that you're in Elk's district, but, but you feel strongly that the treasurer's position is the one that, that fits your future goals within the county the most?
I do, yeah. The commissioners take on so much that I don't even understand half of what you guys deal with.
We don't either.
Wait, you read our agenda.
All the stuff with the road department, all those different things that you have to make decisions on. I feel like that, you know, that's not really the path that I see myself going. I feel like in the Treasurer's Department, not only can I help make that department run with my experience in finance, but I can also be a leader that steps up and helps in other ways.
So does that include not running for county commissioners, I mean?
Not anytime soon.
Sorry, David.
Maybe once I get more educated on some of the other things going on.
I like the question, you know, especially if we're kinda wrapping this up. I just like the question of, like, the end question to be, is there anything else you'd like to tell us? Or is there anything else you'd like to add to, you know, the things that we've already asked you or that you've already said?
I just wanted to highlight my leadership skills a little bit more, because I talked about it a little bit. But when I started at the Court Clerk's Office, it was a really tough place to work. I worked there for a year before I was promoted to supervisor. And they had a reputation for not being nice to each other, not being nice to attorneys or other departments. And it was a really tough year. And when I got promoted to supervisor, my number one goal was to change that department. And that's what I did. And it was a lot of hard work with the help of Doug. It didn't happen overnight. It was years of hard work to change it, to change the culture and what we accepted and what we would allow in that office. And I just feel like that's a really good example of my leadership skills and what I can do. That department is great now. We have our heckups from time to time and we have, you know, and we deal with them. But that group is a team. They have a good reputation. The attorneys love them. They're there to support each other and the judge and anything that they need to do. And I'm really proud of that department and those things that I've been able to do in that office.
I have one more. So if you are looking at the Treasurer's Department and you work with them, do you see technology upgrades? Do you see, what would you improve in that department that you know about right now?
I don't know about much. I know that Gabe did the online payments while he was in office. That was kinda the big thing that we talked about three years ago that needed to be done. So I don't really know what technology they might be needing. But I'm open to technology. I think that, you know, we've made some big improvements since I've been here within the county in technology. And I'm not the most tech savvy, but I'm happy to learn and I'm not technology scared either. I, anything we look at and find, I will be on board to advance in technology.
They're using a check scanner now. Huge improvement. Need to process all those checks.
Gabe, any more questions? Everybody done?
I'm done, but thank you very much.
Appreciate the opportunity.
And you are appreciated here very much.
Very much so.
Hey, Pat, if you wanna bring the others back?
They want, they don't have to do that, do they?
No, they don't have to. If they wanna go home, we can let them know.
Yeah, if they want, but if you wanna listen to the deliberation, you can stay.
It's gonna be a tough one.
Wanna trade places for a day? Well, I just wanna say, this has been a pretty impressive afternoon. I feel like I could walk away tomorrow and you guys could take it all on and do just a wonderful job. This is probably one of the harder decisions that I, in fact, I haven't really made it yet in my own mind. But thank you all three for applying. That's, you have a bright future, all of you. And even if it doesn't happen today, it will happen, I can see in the future for all three of you. So don't throw in the towel if it doesn't go your way. I don't know where to start. I've been thinking about this for almost a week now. And there's a concern that I have that I, I feel like we've always kinda promoted from within. Because I don't wanna send the message to the other employees that you can't move up in, in county government, even if you're in that department. And I don't wanna, that, to send that message out. So right now, I guess my, I'm kinda leaning towards Jody because she covered for Gabe when Gabe left. She's, so far as I know, have done a great job. She has been in it about nine months, really, without Gabe around. I think Gabe did come back a time or two and, and help with tax drive and some of the muscle work on it. But I appreciate the fact that there is somebody that steps up and is willing to take that role on. However, there's, like I said earlier, either any of you guys could do this job easy peasy. And honestly, my concern with Gabby, and it was my first question, is I think you're gonna get bored with it. Because you're, you're a pretty smart person and I don't know if there's gonna be enough mental challenge in that job, because there's a lot of standard things that you have to do, how you invest, and there's only so many places you can go. And I'm concerned about not tapping your abilities. And, and I don't know. That's not really fair on my part to say that you would get bored with the job. Maybe you would, you could do better than anybody else. But right now, Johanna is doing such a wonderful job on PNC. I hate to lose her at that position, because things have gone really, really good there and we have not had any complaints or any lawsuits or any tort claims. And it's like, I don't like to rock the boat, because, you know, everybody's doing their job really good. So I wanna hear from the other two. So I want to hear from the other two and see how, what they feel about and maybe by the time they get done, I'll have made up my mind.
I was hoping I, you guys would do it, so I didn't have to. We have three very impressive candidates in front of us for different reasons. And this is, you know, I've done a lot of hiring in my lifetime, a lot. And I want you to know, this is probably one of the hardest ones that I will ever have to make. I agree with El, all three of you could do the job. Now, I have a management background myself and the things that I look for, I look for initiative, I look for who is preparing themselves for the next step. Who is the one that is taking classes? Who is, has the management background? Who is trying to improve themselves? This is an elected position, ladies. It's tough to run for public office because we could appoint one of you and you could run next year and lose. And now you've given up the career that you have either started with the county or hope to in the future. So it's not a small commitment on your behalf also for stepping up, especially those that are already here and, and taking on this challenge. Running for office is something different than I've ever done. And it's, it was quite an interesting experience. We'll have to do it again beside whoever runs next year. So we will be there for, to support each other. I think that you all have three, there are slight variations to each one of you, okay? Joanna has a degree in accounting, has the political background, knows what it takes to be a political player. And that is what this position is first and foremost. Anybody can run for this position. I don't care if they've been the dog catcher in the past, they can take on this position and learn it. So that is one consideration that I take into play. You are an elected official, you're representing the county. Professionalism is very important when you're out there. We as an elected team have to present ourselves to the community in a very professional way at all times. So that is something that I look for in, in any type of management position because I've, I've heard people come in and get really upset over taxes. You have to know how to present yourself in a professional way. So that's something I'm looking for. You know, setting a future goal, I, I didn't know Gabby had ran before. That's interesting to me because you've expressed interest in this position in the past then. And that is something I think that, you know, that, that's interesting to me. I didn't know that you had expressed that interest in the past. Putting yourself into the, into the running for this means that all of you want to serve the county in some capacity. It's just who can do it now and still run for office next year and get elected. So that's a consideration that I have to take into account too. This is a political position. So all of your community service is fairly impressive. That's important to me in this position. Most important thing though is management. Your management training, your management foundation is important for this position. And I don't know what I'm gonna do yet. It's hard. What?
Oh, boy. You guys, I, I, you know.
We need to write them on a, a piece of paper and pass it around.
Yeah, I was gonna say echoing what they've already said is that this is a decision that makes me kind of sick my stomach because I think all three of you guys would be great at what we expect and what we need from that job. You know, Gabby, I think like, you know, like I said, I think you have a really impressive amount of history here and what you've done, you've showed, you know, you can do what you need to do. You can, I think, excel in probably any position that we ask you to fulfill. Jody, you stepped up. You've been here, you understand the process of this specific office. And, you know, I think, again, I think all of you guys have so much to add to it. I struggle a lot with kind of what El brought up too, is that we have this need to, you know, move people up within the organization. You know, promoting from within is always a great thing, but I also, you know, look at Joanna and what she's potentially bringing in. And I think, holy cow, this is, you know, an opportunity for, you know, a new perspective, you know, an opportunity to get some new blood in the position. So I, I'm struggling really hard and I think we need to keep talking about it a little bit more. But I, again, you know, I think you guys all have so much to offer. I just, I don't even know where I stand right now.
That is one thing I've thought about a lot too, because I think that Joanna does bring an outside focus into the county. I mean, when I did that, I felt like I brought fresh insight, you know, of ways that we can improve and do things differently. I, I think, you know, Gabby could do a number of different things. I know Pat's retiring. I would love to see Gabby mentor with her and become our HR person. But I don't put you into that position because that's, if that's not of interest, it's not of interest. It, it's really difficult. I do, I like Joanna's background. I like a lot of the things that she's done and bringing in a lot of, of accounting, but I think Gabby could be very good at this. I think Jody has stepped up. It's, you know, this is really a hard one. I am looking for professionalism. I, I think that that's really critical. So you three are out there going, just make a decision! And it, it's not that easy. It really isn't. I think at this moment in time, I'm, I'm kind of leaning toward Joanna.
I, you know, I, I gotta say that.
I'm also right there with Gabby.
I, I want to continue to work with both of you guys in a really good regard and I just, I was really impressed with what Joanna brought in. So I think I'd probably be leaning towards Joanna right now as well.
So it sounds like the decision has been made and you'll never know my pick.
No, that's not fair because I could lean.
I, I was gonna say, I mean, it's just, it's.
I think.
I really just don't want to lose you, Gabby. And I think.
I don't.
Jody, one of the things I wanted to say to you is I think that you have time to continue learning in that position and I think that you'd be a great at it. But I, I do think that you have the opportunity to continue to learn from the position and, you can only go up from there.
Well, and the other thing that, sure, it brings up a very good point is, is all three are, if you're interested, can run for this job next year. And I think that that's probably the most important factor in my head is that let the public pick. They're, they're gonna decide who they want as treasurer. And I think there'll be some different things come out in the campaign. Because Sherry's right, you get beat up really bad on a campaign and you have to eat a lot of dirt, but it's part of the process and it would be interesting to see how all three of you handle that because it's, it's not easy. But I'm still of the old mindset because I'm the old fashioned guy that when someone steps up in the department and says, I'll take that on and I'll try and do it, I, I respect that, I like that because it could have been just the opposite. I don't want the job. You don't have anybody that wants the job, then it's, that whole department could be crashing and burning right now. So I appreciate the fact that Jody stepped up and I want to learn the job, I want to do the job. I think you have a ways to go to, to get there, but I think you can do it. So I'm leaning towards Jody right now, just for that very reason. You have to put yourself in their shoes if, if we did this in the clerk's office or we did this in any, any department. The rest of those employees are gonna, I think are gonna feel it, not just the, not just Jody, whoever it is in that particular position.
And I respect that totally.
It's important that you promote from within. I think it's very important for morale of, of all employees.
And I totally respect that. Jody has moved within that department fairly rapidly because of people moving out. And, but this is an elected position. To me, it's different. This is something where next year, the voters are gonna make their choice. And right now, we have to look at, you know, what that looks like. So to me, it's not a promotion from within in my mindset. This is a political position and whoever is going to be there is going to have to function in a political function. And that's just different to me because I totally believe in promoting from within. It's just different when it's an elected position in my mind. So, and I had, I, I want you to know, I totally respect you for stepping up in everything that you've done. That's not part of my decision. And I, I do believe that you have started reaching out to learn about management, but I just feel like right now that with what we have had, management skills are really key and critical. And I think preparing yourself for the next step in your career is important. And I think you now can go in and take some management classes and really focus on, on preparing for the future. And that's, that's just what I'm looking at. Gabby's done that. And, and this is where I'm really struggling because you have so much talent, Gabby, that we could use all over the county. That's true. Joanna brings fresh perspective into that and that's, you know, I, I would, I'm really struggling with this. I just think that maybe bringing an outside voice in might help us move toward the future. Having said that, you know, I, I know you'd be a huge loss in the clerk's department too, but that's not fair to you. You know, you want that next step and I think that that's important. I'm struggling. I really am.
I agree.
You guys want to table this and make our decision in a week or two?
That's not fair to these ladies. I don't think that's fair at all.
Well, I think it's a possibility. Or we could take a motion.
May I make good suggestion?
Absolutely.
I, while it may not be fair to these three and you may not think it is, I have seen this a lot in interviewing and sometimes you just need to walk away and let it set. So maybe making the decision next Monday would be better for the three ladies than being forced to make one.
Unfortunately.
Probably two weeks.
I can zoom in my vote, Pat.
Yeah, for next week?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I mean, if that would work, it seems like that way you all have time to really think about it and can bring forth the best decision for the county. So that would be my suggestion. I, I've seen this too much and it's just too hard if you don't have time to really think about it. So it's up to you all.
I'm happy to sit on it for a week if we want to do that.
It's really hard on these ladies.
I was gonna say, I'd be happy to make a decision today as well.
You call it.
That is very unfair.
I always have to make the decisions.
Looking to our chairman on the other end of you down there.
I know it's unfair to these ladies to make them wait another week, but I would like to wait another week and give us some time to think about this. If it was an off-election year where this person was gonna serve a year and a half or two more years, then I, I would make a motion tonight. But I think with an election coming up in not too many months, I, if they're serious about the job, they can all run for it. And that's the fairest way to do it, I think. In the meantime, I think we need to go with, with what we know, which is Jody. She can handle the job. She's been doing it under two different treasurers and let her finish out that term.
So you just gave your opinion, so we didn't wait a week.
Well, I don't want to make a motion if it's not gonna get a second. Or I can make the motion, I guess, see if it gets a second. Maybe I should do that.
And I guess that I, I would not second that motion at this moment. So bottom line, I, I feel like even if I wait a week, I'm going to go with Joanna.
I feel the same way and I really want you guys to know that a lot of it came down to the way that she interviewed and I think what she potentially can add to our organization. I think that we're lucky to have both of you guys already in the organization. I was excited when I saw you speak at the, at its forum back, I think that was 2018, Gabby. I think you did a great job presenting yourself at that point and I really enjoyed working with you and Jody as well. And I really can't even tell you how hard that decision for me is, but I think, I'll just throw it out there and say I'll make the motion. We go with Joanna DeFort, interim treasurer.
I'll second.
If you'd second it, in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Kate, congratulations.
And again, this is the hardest thing I've done in my forty-seven years of managing.
So Joanna, I need you to come up to the front. Congratulations. I want you to repeat after me. Hold up your right hand, please. Hi, Joanna DeFort, do solemnly swear.
Hi, Joanna DeFort, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Idaho.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Idaho.
And I will do, I will perform the duties of the treasurer.
I will perform the duties of the treasurer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
There was supposed to be a Bible involved with all of this, El.
Should be a Bible.
I don't admire discussion in front of the candidates. Thank you ladies very much for being able to have a discussion as well.
I've never had an open, like, interview discussion.
That's really tough.
Absolutely.
And with people that I consider to be my friends. I mean, that's the whole thing is One Valley County team, I consider you guys all to be friends. And this is truly very difficult. So.
All right. I guess your first day will be tomorrow. Does that work?
Can we chat about that?
Sure. We can chat about that.
Absolutely. On the record or shall we?
No, this was our last agenda item, so this meeting is now adjourned.
And I can talk about it and then I'll.